I'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 24th. A first order of business would be a roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chanza?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitler?
Here.
Did we lose Tony?
Uer?
Here.
Throme?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. We will have Alderman, Malley, when he comes back in. Tony, if you can hear me, just type in when you get back on. Let us know you're here. I guess biggest thing first I want to say is thank you everyone for trying to work through this so we can get here and be patient. We're just going to take time after everything we go through and make sure that everybody gets to say whatever they want to say and the discussions we need to have. Just make sure we speak slowly and clearly tonight so this can all get recorded so that we have a good recording to replay to the public at some point. Next up on the agenda would be approval of the minutes for February 25th, 2020. Does anybody have any comments on that? If there are no comments, could I get a motion for approval?
No move.
Okay, now that we have a motion, I recognized O'Brien as the motion and it sounded like Meitler was the second.
Sure.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. That can go on the consent agenda. Next up would be item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed. Is there anything anybody would like to change or remove tonight?
I really think that we should probably take off the bed and breakfast discussion and the marijuana discussion, however you feel about it, and I don't need to get into that, but I just think there's too many people in town that have opinions about that and for the council to take any action on either one of those subjects right now, we're just opening ourselves up for a whole bunch of criticism that we're doing something in the blind here, nobody can monitor it very easily, nobody can be at a meeting. I just think it's bad government at its best.
I guess.
Marijuana is discussion only, isn't it? Discussion only, isn't it?
I don't know, I think any discussion on the subject is going to get people on both sides of the issue, which I've heard from, all excited that we're down here tapping good discussions that nobody seems to be able to be part of.
Yeah, I guess my feeling as chairman is I'm okay with that mainly because we're not having any video recording of this meeting. It's just an audio recording. If there was video of it and we had questions presented to us or comments presented to us, I think I would be okay with discussing the Plan Commission's recommendations for the cannabis. Now, that being said, the one that I feel more strongly about is the bed and breakfast one because I think there's more discussion on both sides of that. In my mind, the cannabis one has already been discussed, we gave direction to send it to the Plan Commission, and I think in my mind, the Plan Commission wants to link together this discussion with the referendum. And the referendum is a totally separate thing from whether or not we allow a craft grower to be in town. And that's, I think, what we're really deciding on, whether we allow that or not. Any discussion or any comments from anybody?
Well, the only thing I want to throw in there with you on that one, Al, is the fact that the state of Illinois seems to be in the process of potentially rewriting this crafter legislation yet again. Nobody's quite sure what that's going to be. Is that going to be an automatic green light to sell it or let people sample it or whatever have you? So supposedly there's legislation kicking around Springfield that that's being proposed, hasn't been acted on or voted on, but I mean, it could be something that could enter the fray here in three or four months. And that would all happen, obviously, before we have the referendum.
Right, and that's a totally separate thing. The retail side of it, even if the state allows it, we can still prohibit the retail sales from that if that's what the public wants. Because that's not part of the state law as it's written today, and when we're discussing this, the only thing we're being asked to change would be to allow them to be a craft grower by today's statute in Batavia.
And we're not even doing that tonight because there's no ordinance in front of us. It's just, do we want to send it? Do we want to have staff draw that legislation?
Draw that legislation.
Ordinance or not?
Ordinance or not?
So, I guess I would propose to remove both the ordinances about bed and breakfast and leave the cannabis one on the agenda. Does anybody have any problems with that?
No.
No.
I would follow the mayor's, I would follow the mayor's direction because I think there are people who are going to want to speak anyway and be heard, so it's not a pressing issue, so it's nothing we have to push right now.
Except there are people that are interested in doing this and we need to have a discussion to start moving it forward. This is not for an ordinance, this is just to discuss whether or not we want staff to write something up. So we're going to.
The discussion on.
Business from doing stuff.
By the time we get to have an agenda item back before us from the, or to the Plan Commission, we should be having face-to-face meetings again.
Correct.
So, I guess I will make a motion that we remove items.
Ten.
Number nine, number 10, from the agenda tonight.
Second.
No.
Motion by Wolf, second by McFadden, is that you Drew?
What?
No.
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 Who was the second?
Second was by Knopf.
Okay.
One question about that.
Question?
Put that to. Do we have a date to put that to then?
One month.
That we'd like to bring those bed and breakfast back?
Yes.
I would say that should be back at the next public meeting that we have, not virtual meeting, but the next public meeting we have.
Right now, the next committee schedule, I believe, is the 14th, but I don't know if that's going to be.
I don't know if that's going to be.
Pull that up.
Okay. Well, I guess I would say if we. If we do it at the next.
Do it at the next.
The next in-person meeting we have at city council chambers.
Is that okay? Hello?
Hello? Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so then we will vote on this. Let's do a roll call.
Okay, Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Throme?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Chanza?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, then that brings us down to item number five, matters from the public for items not on agenda. Do we have any questions or anybody with not on the agenda tonight?
I don't think the public can hear.
Does Anthony have any question?
Does Anthony have any question?
No questions to report at this time.
Thank you. Okay, next up would be consent agenda. Alderman, Chanza.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 20-47-R, requesting a permit from IDOT for closure of various roadways for 2020 farmers market special events. Resolution 20-48-R, requesting a permit from IDOT for closure of Route 31 for 2020 July 4th fireworks display special event. Resolution 20-49-R, requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for the 2020 Batavia dinner table special event. Resolution 20-50-R, requesting a permit from IDOT for closure of various roadways for the 2020 downtown Batavia block party and classic car show special event. Resolution 20-51-R, requesting a permit from IDOT for closure of various roadways for the 2020 DHS homecoming parade special event. Resolution 20-52-R, requesting a permit from IDOT for closure of various roadways for Oktoberfest special event. And resolution 20-53-R, authorization to purchase truck equipment in the amount of $115,040 from Henderson Products.
Henderson Products, Inc.
Your honor, I would move.
Your honor, I would move.
Agenda is read.
Agenda is read. Second. Second.
He chants, he chants the second. Who? Meitler was the second. All those in favor? I have a comment.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Does anybody have any comments?
Does anybody have any comments?
Yes, this is, so I have a comment.
So I have a comment.
On item G, resolution.
Item G, resolution 20-53-R.
It's important that anybody watching and listening and wondering why we are spending $100,000 right now. This is to.
This is to.
A truck that we've already purchased.
Already purchased.
That is ready for.
Ready for.
2021 winter.
2021 winter.
But now, we will lose a piece of equipment.
Lose a piece of equipment.
Future use. This needs to be done at this time.
Okay, does anybody have any follow-up on Joe's issue? I think it's just information to get that out to the public that this is for the coming season.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alderman Wolf, can I speak?
Yes.
I don't know if the question is whether we should do it now or not, it was kind of broken up, but what we've previously purchased is just the chassis, so this is all the equipment that goes onto the chassis in order to make it operational.
Right, I think that was, both intent was to make sure that people. The rest.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we had a call already for in favor. Is there anybody opposed to this? Okay, motion carries, consent agenda will be then presented to the city council. Okay, up next would be item number seven, resolution 20-54-R, authorize the draw on letters of credit for the property at 1780 Hubbard Avenue. Alderman Callahan?
Thank you. So this is a resolution authorizing the draw of the letters of credit for the property at 1780 Hubbard Avenue. Back in 2012, the city received two letters of credit for a project located at that address. The letters of credit will expire on June 4th of this year. The city has been working with the property owner since the inception of the project to get them to comply with the requirements of our code and the approved plans. The issues have now been resolved and we are in litigation with the property owner on this and other deficiencies. Staff feels at this time we draw on these letters of credit to ensure the funds are available to make the required approvals. Scott, did Scott ever get on the line?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, Scott, do you have anything to add and maybe provide some background on what the project was?
Yeah, basically it's.
I know we've talked about it.
Yeah, basically it's construction storage lot and the, we've been trying to work with the owner to finish the grading that was required under the existing plan and to confine their operations on the property and some other things that they had done or they said they were going to do, most of which they have not done, and they have just kind of expanded their operation. We are in litigation on this property and so, you know, as part of this, because they're not complying and have received better from the banks, they are going to terminate the letters of credit. It's our recommendation and the city attorney's recommendation to draw on the letters of credit at this time.
Does anyone have any questions for Scott? Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve to city council, approval of resolution 20-054-R, authorizing the draw on the letters of credit for the property of 1780 Hubbard Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Callahan, second by Uer, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Scott, can that go on the consent agenda or do we have to?
That can go on the consent.
Okay, consent.
All right, consent agenda it is. Thank you, now on to item number eight, ordinance 20-24, amending the city of Batavia zoning code, title ten of the city code related to sign regulations. Alderman, Callahan?
Yep, thank you. As was mentioned, this is related to some of the sign heights that we've previously discussed that went to the zoning board. Scott, if you could describe this one.
Sure, the, when we had the variance for a sign not too long ago, the council gave direction to go back and look at the sign height ordinance for industrial districts, and so we did do that and took that to the Plan Commission. We also took a couple of other cleanup items onto their agenda as well, which included things regarding how we do sign face changes, window signage on second floor in the employment districts, and illumination of gas top or, gas pump topper signs. So those are, those things were all included as part of that. So the Plan Commission reviewed that, they recommended approval of the height, changes the, to the ordinance to allow the sign heights to go from six feet to 10 feet, but they also recommended a limitation on the maximum wall area for businesses to be set at 200 square feet to make sure that, you know, it's kind of in compliance with the size of the building and everything. So they made a recommendation for those changes and staff recommends approval of them as written in the ordinance.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, I make a motion, we approve to city council ordinance 20-24, amending the text of the zoning code for sign regulations.
Second.
No.
Motion by Callahan, second by Knopf, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries, that can go on consent.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Callahan. Per direction earlier, we have removed items nine and 10. That will take us down to item 11, which is ordinance 20-28, amending 2020 pay for ESDA volunteer members. Any questions on that? It's basically moving the pay for ESDA on Saturday for farmers market that would take their pay to 150 per Saturday, the previous rate was 125. And staff does support the, moving that up on the, as the volunteer members of the fire department and place that on our next council meeting. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I would just say that these guys do a great job down there helping out every weekend to make sure that everything goes smoothly and I think they do a great job. With no other comments, I will make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 20-28, amending 2020 payment for ESDA volunteer members.
Second.
Second.
Malley.
Motion by Wolf, the second was.
Malley.
Malley is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, that can go on consent as well. All right, next up would be item number 12, Plan Commission recommendation for cannabis-related Laura, are you there? She may not be, she's also trying to be involved in another meeting tonight. I guess I'll start this off, the summary was that on March 4th, the Plan Commission held a public hearing and made a recommendation regarding cannabis use in employment districts. By unanimous vote of zero to seven, the Plan Commission recommended no change be made to the zoning code to permit or allow with either conditional or permitted use a craft grower infusing organization, processing organization, or transporting organization in the LI and GI zoning districts. Staff provides this memo as a summary of the discussion and outlines steps the city council may take if it wishes to allow these uses. I guess from what I watched of the Plan Commission meeting, basically I think they are of the opinion that because of the referendum we have proposed for November this year, that we should not do anything with our zoning code for these things which in my mind are not part of the retail sales side of this as far as a dispensary, and as of yet are not in state law as allowed dispensary actions or retail sales. With that, I guess I'll ask for comments.
Hey Alan, this is Elliot.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I would just say in general, I don't see how these are the same topic as the referendum. This, to me, is the craft growing side, this is not recreational sales side. I don't know why we need to defer any conversations around this, we already allow the medical side, so to me this is just a potential major electric use that could occur in an industrial district.
Thank you.
Alan? Alan, this is Dan.
Go ahead.
Just speaking in general terms, I felt like the Plan Commission misfired here. I thought that this was also a wholly separate issue, and I thought initially that we should kick it back to them with some instructions to be specific and say that we do consider these items to be separate and we need your consideration on them.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Alan?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm of the same opinion, I heard from some people on this and it's, I believe the direction was more in the lines of they felt that they don't want us to have any marijuana in the town, and that could be a confusing message in the long run for the referendum. Because I do know that there are people that are not against any grow facilities in town, but they are against recreational marijuana dispensary sales in town. The medical marijuana cultivation centers were passed in 2014 with the recreation, the recreational statutes that went in this past year. Those medical cultivation centers are also allowed to grow for recreational use. So it could be confusing to people that think they're prohibiting all recreational sales grow in town, but they're not, because certain uses have already been approved six years ago and by the change in the law from the state within this last year. So I think that we need to remember that the message that we were sending was for the referendum, for the public to decide, do they want a recreational dispensary for sales in the community? That's the sole question. And everything else is to be determined under our existing, and I don't view these other grow facilities as any different than we've already allowed.
I would agree with you wholly. Any other questions or comments?
This is Joe.
I agree with.
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with exactly what Marty said, this is nothing more to me than another version of cultivation, it's a specialized cultivation, we already allow it, why not allow this one?
Thank you. Next?
This is Michael.
Joe?
I agree with Marty.
Thank you, Mike. Next up?
This is, this is true, I agree with what Marty said.
Thank you, anybody else?
Yeah, Mike Rosado, I agree with what Marty said as well.
Thank you. Next?
Hey, uh.
Jennifer, Baron?
Jennifer, go ahead.
Um, I agree with Marty.
Thank you. I couldn't quite hear who else was in on that, go ahead, next.
That was Michael, Alan. I just wanted to say, I appreciate everybody speaking up, it may be redundant, but it's important that being a meeting that we're doing, that everyone is speaking their opinions this way, even though they're all in agreement with Marty, it's, I think it's important that we speak up.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Mark, this is Mark, I agree with what's been said, that this is no different than anything else we offer in town right now and it should not be confused with the referendum.
Thank you.
This is Abby, I agree.
Thank you, Abby.
This is Keenan, I agree.
Thank you.
Tony here, I agree.
Okay. Is that everybody?
Nick, and I agree. No, it's Nick, I agree.
Thank you, Nick. Hey, anybody else? Any other comments? All right, I think from my count, I think everybody's in somewhat agreement of the same things here. I think we should have staff send this back to the Plan Commission with the direction that this is a separate thing from the referendum, it's separate from retail sales, whether they be retail, medical, retail, recreational, and if the state were to pass something to change the craft grower designation to allow a retail sales, that would be attached to the referendum. The referendum will control retail sales in Batavia. This is not about retail sales.
Alan?
Yes, go ahead.
I know, I know one of the mayor's other concerns were for some of these places to have on-site consumption. If the state goes ahead and preempts us on that, we, we have to follow with whatever the state law says, but if the direction that some of the, what the. the state law says, but if the direction that some of the, what the, uh, zoning and planning commission can come back with is if they don't want onsite consumption, they can put that in their recommendations to us. And those are the things that I, when it goes back to them, that send us what they do and do not want, some of the odoriferous smells, how far of, you know, providing those kind of recommendations to us for us to vote on, and if they don't recommend any onsite consumption, then, you know, it'll come to us with that recommendation, and we can choose to agree or disagree at that point. But to come back with those things that they don't want, and if the mayor has some concerns about, um, onsite consumption, um, then I think that they can address that by putting that in a negative recommendation.
Right, and I guess, for me, I would like to see regardless of what the Plan Commission rec- recommends, if we allow any of this, that they all be conditional uses so that they have to come back to city council for approval.
I agree with that.
But I, I also, with the conditional use, the only thing there is, you know, obviously, I've learned recently that conditional use doesn't really mean a whole heck of a lot, because there's nothing we can really do to stop a, um, to stop the video gaming. It, the conditional use doesn't really mean anything, unless somebody can convince me otherwise, I just don't always understand the point of it.
Well, if I, if, if I can interject for a moment, the, the initial use, I wouldn't say allows you to do nothing, but it does allow you to impose certain conditions, and some of those conditions can be potentially onerous enough where some would not want to locate a facility in whatever, whatever use it is. So if you say that, you know, you can only have X square feet, and you can only have, uh, odors within certain feet of the property, or whatever, whatever the limitation would be, you know, those conditions may make it, you know, virtually impossible to locate in one, one location. So that, that's, you know, you do have some level of control. You can't just prohibit users, but you do have some...
But isn't that just done through codifying it?
Well, you, I mean, there's two ways to do it. I mean, you can, you can codify it specifically, you know, where you say, okay, you know, they can't be located within 600 feet of a residential area or something to that effect, and that's, that's pretty straightforward, you know, zoning regulation. But, you know, as part of a condition use, you can also say, you know, things that may not be in the ordinance otherwise, so let's say, let's say because of the, um, let's say it's on, on Kirk Road, you may want to say that we're, we're specifically not going to allow you to have an access on Kirk Road, or you're going to have, you know, a certain amount of limited signage. There's things that you can do through the conditional use that would allow you to regulate it to an extent. You couldn't be able to completely prohibit it throughout the city, but you can, you know, regulate it to an extent.
Fair enough.
Okay, so are we in agreement that we send this back to the Plan Commission with that direction through staff?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. Is anybody against it?
Sorry?
Is anyone against sending that back? Okay, hearing none. I think our discussion is done here. Is there, and let me ask Anthony, are there any questions from anybody?
Alderman Wolf, there are no questions at this time.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
And Laura, have you rejoined the meeting?
Yes, I have.
Okay, do you have any further comments on that?
No, I, uh, literally just joined three minutes ago.
Okay, thank you. Then, uh, after that would be item number 13, which is project status. Just in time, Laura.
Darn, I shouldn't have just stayed on that, uh, meeting just a little bit longer. Um, I'll save the best for last. Um, uh, first, I'd like to go over, uh, several initiatives that we have taken here at City Hall to try to protect, uh, both the health of our staff and that of the job and preserve our ability to continue to provide, uh, the critical services that the community needs, especially, uh, during this time. Um, all offices of the City Hall are closed to the public, and they have permitted staff reporting to the office. Um, the police lobby area is still open. The members of the public may drop off utility billing payments or paperwork for the Community Development Department. But the Community Development Department and the Public Works Department have split their staff and have staff working on opposite days. Both of these strategies are to increase social distancing, to preserve, uh, a sufficient workforce to continue to, uh, provide the services needed. Also, in community development, um, there is a need to amend our practices with regard to inspections. So we're no longer doing inspections on the interior of occupied buildings, uh, and that includes contracted plumbing inspections. Um, we have notified anyone who had a inspection scheduled and have notified them that we intend to reschedule when the, uh, the situation of risk has been reduced. We will, however, uh, in certain circumstances, we may be able to provide a remote inspection or a virtual, uh, inspection, if you will, uh, in order to assist, uh, perhaps a homeowner with finishing a project. We will not be issuing interior remodeling permits during this restriction, uh, but we will accept permit applications, review them as long as applicants realize that until the risk has been reduced and our public health authorities advise, um, and reduce public distancing requirements, um, we will not be issuing those permits. We will be conducting all exterior inspections as we've done in the past, and we also are going to conduct inspections on new construction, uh, for both interior and exterior inspections. However, when we come onsite to perform our inspection, we are going to ask that no trades people be present during the inspection, only the site superintendent, uh, to allow us access to the building so that we can perform that. Um, and next, wanted to talk about, uh, the changes that Advanced Disposal, Disposal has implemented with regard to our refuse collection. All trash and refuse recycling has to be placed in the company-designated cart or can with handles only, um, and loose items outside of the container will not be collected.
Laura?
Have a cart, you are allowed to utilize a can with handles. Yes, Alan?
No, this is Marty. Um, I just got a notification that connection has been lost to the meeting. I'm on the phone, but I don't know if we've, if, you might want to do a roll call real quick, just to see if everybody's still here.
Danny, can you do a roll?
Do you want me to do a roll call?
Yeah, just to see if everybody's...
Okay, um, Miller?
Yeah.
Rosado?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Anson?
Here.
Aaron? Here. Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan? Yeah, Callahan?
Here.
Meisler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Jerome?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Okay, so we are still here. Thanks for coming back in, Marty. Laura, go ahead.
Okay, um, the second item, it's all bulky items for pickup or collection is suspended until further notice. At this time, yard waste service is unaffected by the changes, however, we do anticipate potential changes to that program as well. And if you utilize the sticker program, we'll continue to pick up items that are bagged. They anticipate that this may change as well. So if possible, please place these items in a container and place the sticker on the handle of the container. Um, the city of Batavia's website has an up-to-date list of the various locations where stickers are currently available. I did receive, um, contact from a resident who was concerned about having to go and pick up those stickers. As it turns out, Advanced Disposal is now selling stickers and half-bags at their office. Um, they can take orders over the phone, and they can mail items to you. The payment is through credit card and debit cards only. Um, I can give you the phone number, is 630-587-8282, and their hours are Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. I would like to let everybody know what incredible support that the city of Batavia is receiving from the governor's office, uh, Mayor Lori Lightfoot's office, the Illinois Municipal League, the CMAP Council Mayor, as well as Metro West. Um, we are incredibly grateful to these partners. The governor has two conference calls per week with, uh, mayors and city administrators. Um, Mayor Lightfoot also has weekly conversation with us, and on a daily basis, I am kept apprised of the latest developments from the federal, state, and even our fellow local level about the things that are being done in order to, uh, mitigate the negative consequences of the public health crisis that we're in. So we're really grateful, um, for that, and I just want to ex- express that. Um, lastly, I was not here for the majority of this meeting because I was attending the meeting of the Batavia School Board, and an agenda item there was consideration whether or not to extend TIF, the Washington Wilson TIF, that is critical to us being able to move forward with the One Washington Project, uh, in a, a scope and size of which it is, and unfortunately, there was unanimous vote against extending the TIF, even though, um, one of the questions they had was, uh, I, I expressed that they are made 100% whole for every school-aged child that ends up living in that property. Um, and, uh, lastly, I also made mention of your commitment that the TIF would be ended early in the event that, uh, whenever all of the costs of this project had been covered, that the city was committed to ending the TIF and would enter into an intergovernmental agreement, um, affirming that. Unfortunately, uh, apparently, none of that was persuasive enough to convince the school board to be a partner in bringing this $50 million project to the city.
Well, that's some very unfortunate news.
Yeah, so thi- this is Mike, so this is, that, that's the end of it then, right?
It is. We have to, uh, circle back with, uh, Dave Petzelt also attended the meeting with me this evening, um, but we are now left with choices of, um, just looking for a project for the remaining time period of this TIF, or going through the expense and time that it takes to de-TIF and re-TIF, because a new TIF does not require, uh, the approval of the other taxing bodies.
Out of curiosity, was there any indication that they would have approved it for less years?
None. It was a pretty quick vote, and it was pretty clear that there wasn't, uh, they, they just were not interested. No one asked about a shorter time period.
Wow.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Michael. I just, I just think it's terribly disappointing. It sounds they already had their minds made up, despite any discuss... Unbelievable.
This is, uh, this is Nick. Is there, uh, did you talk with, uh, Mr. Petzelt on the way out? Is, is this 100% a, a case of he can't get financing from the banks, or that it's just not worth it to him?
Dave and I have not talked after the meeting like the committee of the whole. The school board held their meeting electronically this evening as well, and it was only a, um, a conference call, but they did public participation, and, um, Sylvia Kepel and the Dinwiddies, um, were also in attendance and gave public comments against extending the TIF. The, um, also Dr. Hitchens read three other comments that had come from the public expressed, uh, their support for voting against extending the TIF.
Laura, can you, did she say who those individuals were?
I just answered, you're like the lawyer there, Scott. I do not remember what the, what those names were, but I'm sure the meeting was recorded to be, you, you, some later, and it, the meeting was fairly brief.
Laura, Tony Malley here. Was, uh, Dr. Hitchens, uh, supported, or did she take any position?
Neither Dr. Hitchens nor Tony Inglazy, uh, made any comment.
Public opinion. But, uh, any comments to you?
Um, Scott Buning, Anthony, and I met with Dr. Hitchens and Tony in February, and they were very open-minded and receptive to the information that we were presenting them as the basis for, um, seeking the TIF extension. Um, they certainly did not indicate at that time that there seemed to be any major, uh, barriers from their point of view. However, you know, it's not a, well, they make a recommendation, it's the, the board who ultimately decides is, is the way that they left it at the, at that meeting.
Exactly. I, because I had the feeling that they would be supportive.
Mm-hmm.
So it went to the board with the positive recommendation, but the board went against it.
I don't know that for certain, but, uh, that was, that was the feeling that I got from Dr. Hitchens and, and from Tony. As well, when we were at the Kirk District Board Meeting last week, um, the executive director, Allison Niemella, indicated that she had conferred with the library and with the school board, and that she felt that, uh, her, what the information she received back from both of those bodies was that they were in favor of it.
Okay, if no other comments, we'll move on to others. Does anybody have any others tonight?
I do. Um, Laura, is there any, uh, more discussion that started to happen on the dam with Park District? Um, because I know that Illinois said that they wanted our plans within a few months on what we wanted to do, so just wondering where we're at with that.
I'd be happy to start that, um, to start that discussion again. I was, uh, frankly letting the dust settle on their referendum, so...
Understood.
We could pick up that discussion right away.
I have a question. Um, and I, it, I thought of it right as the agenda item passed, but the, um, are we still thinking that this summer we'll be doing Friday night?
So at this time, do not have a, an application that includes North River Street closures on Second Fridays.
Hey, anything else?
Alan.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Alan. Yeah, it's Marty. Laura, I had sent you the article today on what the mayor of Elk Grove was doing regarding some local economic incentives. I was on a COVID call today, put on by the Council of Foreign Relations, that was talking about local impact and the need for local initiatives. I sent that to you and the mayor earlier, and I know you were maybe discussing things. Is it anything that we will be learning of, or is that going to be something that would be under the mayor's powers?
I would not anticipate that something like that would be done under the mayor's powers, because it is some, something where there is more time for deliberation about exactly what, what relief would be provided, and to whom, and what the criteria would be. I can tell you that we have already implemented some measures to offer relief to our residents and our business community. One of those is we have stopped shut-offs for electric and water. We know that some people have lost their jobs, and that that's going to make it very difficult for people to, in some cases, make those payments. Also, ordinarily, our local liquor licenses would expire as of the end of April, and we had previously sent out renewal letters asking for payment for the license. We have suspended that indefinitely at this point, letting them know that it's what the Illinois Liquor Commission has authorized. We are allowing the current license to remain in place for a period of time. It's probably going to be several months before we would implement that again. Elk Grove-
Yeah, and when-
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, yeah, I didn't, I wasn't saying a yea or nay for what the mayor could or couldn't do. I just didn't know how he had done it. It seemed like he had consulted, and there was kind of a plan in place. I just want to voice that I am not opposed, sitting on, you know, some of the reserves that we have, if there are some of the most dire in our community, this is going to be financially devastating, and if there, if there is anything for us to consider in the way of water or electric, I would be definitely in favor of looking for that.
So one of the things, of course, that we must be cautious of, it is great that we have healthy reserves right now, but some of the fall from what is happening economically will fall on the state's shoulders as well. The revenues that would have been generated by businesses that have already closed is already going to be a significant impact, as well as whatever the future holds. One of the things you may have heard about is the extension of paid benefits under, the federal government has authorized a couple of weeks of paid leave for employees affected by COVID-19 for private employers. They say that those costs that the employer has will be reimbursed through payroll taxes, but they made a very specific exception that this does not apply to state and local government. And so that, that has the potential to be a pretty huge unforeseen expense. But yes, I think that we should look at things that we can do, certainly to help-
Yeah, no, and-
-pain.
Yeah, no, and I'm not advocating for just going out and just getting rid of all the reserves on this in any way, shape, or form. I'm just saying if there are, you know, Peggy is very bright, and if she comes with any plans that may alleviate some of the, some of the pain creatively while not, you know, cutting the nose off our face, I think those would be definite things for us to, you know, we, we have the rainy day fund for a reason, and it's delusional.
Yes.
This is Jeff Shulkey. Let me interject myself here because I'm being talked about. I have, absolutely will not have any intention, nor will I ever decide that the city council is going to buy into the plan. If this was ever to be done, this would have to be a vote by the 14 members of the city council to do any type of financial plan to support anybody. I really don't think myself as a mayor, or any other mayor in the state of Illinois has that power. I think it potentially immediately could be challenged if somebody wanted to do it. So I have absolutely no intention of doing something like that. I'll tell you that in some of the conversations I've had in the last few days with other cities who have agitated about this, I'll describe it, one of the big problems they have is how you would distribute this refund to people. Some think that somehow the city's just going to open the door and start giving away refund checks to everybody. That ain't going to work, because you don't even know who half those people are walking in the door that want to, want, they're looking for the refund check. So about the only way you could probably do it would be to, to offer some type of reduction on utility bills, and then take some of this money and pay for the difference between what they are charged and what you're going to give them to help keep their bill down. That's about the best I think we could do if you ever wanted to do this. The other comment I'd like to make is-
Yeah, and that's-
Go ahead, Marty.
No, I was going to say, that's exactly what the mayor did, Your Honor, and that's what-
Right, right.
I was kind of saying along with that, that might not be a bad idea.
Well, I don't know. The mayor of Elk Grove Village has a lot of different ideas, and he has a lot more money than most other mayors in the region, certainly myself, as far as his ability to do stuff. He's, he's off on some foreign island once a year having an Elk Grove Village Day or celebration or something that he pays for. Anyway, getting back to this whole thing, I would also just suggest that we are, this, this coronavirus is going to have a very, very impacting riso of situations on all of us and local government, and I think the bad part of it is probably going to be the loss of revenue and reflective and responsive way that governments are going to have to do with this. And so I guess the bottom line is, if anybody thinks that there's a great new something coming to Batavia or any other town in the area here in the near future, be it a river improvement, or a road improvement, or some new building project, or whatever have you, I think that's probably now been placed off in the far distant, because the state of Illinois, first and foremost, as far as I can tell, and from what I hear from all the conversations I'm involved with in Metro West, and at the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and at the Metropolitan Agency for Planning, the state of Illinois doesn't seem to have very little, if any, extra resources that they can throw into anything. So I don't think anybody that thinks they're going to get the state of Illinois to do any project in the near term, probably is going to find themselves at a disappointing place very soon, because I don't think any of that's going to happen. And so we just, I think, are going to have to kind of lick our wounds and pick ourselves back up and go back, go forward, once we get rid of this coronavirus. But it's going to be a while before, I think financially, Batavia and every other city around us is going to have the ability to recover from this. This is going to be a real whopper, and I, I'm very, the thing that disturbs me the most is, I'm very afraid that we are going to lose some, some storefront businesses and some, and some visible, highly light businesses in this town are going to have to tell us that they're terminating their business because they've gone broke over this particular situation. And that's a sad day. I've already had a couple tell me that this is where they, they think they're headed, and I want, I don't want to name names yet, because they need to make their own announcements, but be prepared, because you're going to see some stuff happen that neither you nor I or anybody else involved in this city government is going to like, because the finances are breaking down, and they're breaking down very quickly and very badly.
Anybody have any better news for tonight? Hey, I suppose I have just a little bit of news. It's Dan. Go ahead. I'm hearing anecdotally from friends in the industry, in the banking industry, that there are funds available on somewhat of an emergency basis, and some banks are taking additional risks that are out. And we're waiting to hear additional information regarding SBA loans and whatnot. But in the last week, I've taken more loan applications for businesses than I have all year. That means they're trying to shore up and keep, keep themselves afloat.
Right. Yeah, it's important that the flow of money continue, and the federal government doesn't shut down some of those avenues of business.
The grocery industry-
Go ahead.
I just heard the grocery industry is doing well.
Yeah.
We've, we've actually hired like 7,000 people in the last week.
Wow, excellent.
Mr. Mayor, your emergency order for the liquor delivery has been very well received. I know, I know my number one constituent here made use of it tonight, and lots of my neighbors are, so I do think that was a very, very well-placed proclamation they made.
Thank you for that. You know, I, I sent you all a memo today outlining some of the more recent developments on the Corona issue, and certainly one of them that, that didn't go over very well, and which I think now we've got it corrected, was, is that this past weekend, we had some people trying to burn off excess grasses and retention ponds and river fronts and whatever have you, and we had, I will tell you, specifically residents in Tanglewood subdivision and in Weaver Landing were on my phone like I have never seen before on Sunday, expressing their complaint about the burning of the land right to the west of the car wash on Main Street. And so I, I've talked to the Gary, I've talked to the fire department, and we are telling everybody now that we're not issuing any more permits for burn-offs until such time as this thing kind of clears out, and we can allow people to come back out of their houses. There were some people that were telling me that in Tanglewood, that smoke was coming into their house, and they had honked the house down, and here we are telling everybody to stay tuned, and then we're dumping smoking ash on top of them. So I think we had to do something there. So I guess I did use my mayoral authority at that point to suggest that we will terminate active burning until such time as this thing kind of passes by.
Hey, anybody else?
Alderman Wolf.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to really kind of say, you know, there's been a few quirks with tonight's meeting, but overall, I think it was very productive, and they're not going to say it themselves, so I'll say it, and that is Howard and Laura spent countless hours trying to get this together and put together the, the, the remote participation, and I, I just think that they did a, a good job. Again, you know, things are a little quirky doing it this way, but I think overall, we got our business done that we needed to get done.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you very much, Gary. It was fun, wasn't it, Howard?
We had a long week. Howard, you can go back to your regular job now.
Yeah, thanks, Howard. Thanks, Laura. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Actually, Howard's got to do more meetings then.
Maybe I can do them from home.
And hopefully I speak for everybody else on the council. I really want to say a big thank you to everybody from the city, from the top to the bottom, that's out there, whatever shifts are working, whatever they have to do to try to keep the things going that we need to keep going in the city. So I-
I am happy to pass that message along.
Yes.
Time to see one of these guys or women out there on the street, anywhere they are, you know, honk, wave, whatever you want to do, but make sure that they know that you appreciate.
Well said, Alan.
And that said, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
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 A motion and multiple, all the vapor? Aye.
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 All right. Thank you all for participating tonight.